Roll call, please.
All right.
Commissioner Cooley.
Present.
Commissioner Kardnis.
Present.
Commissioner Douglas is absent. Chair Chelf is absent. Vice Chair Kirkpatrick.
Here.
Okay. John, you want to lead us in Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge and face the flag. Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I can approve the agenda myself if that's correct?
Yeah, you can do that as long as nobody has a dissenting vote.
Got it? You guys good?
Yes.
Okay. Blue folder items, we have read one.
You have one item.
Okay. Got it?
Any public comments?
The non-agenda items?
Vice Chair, if you could receive, just do a motion to receive and file the blue folder item.
Can I have a motion to receive the blue folder items?
Motion to receive and file the blue folder items. That's a mouthful.
A second.
Do you need a roll call?
Just do all in favor.
Good. All in favor?
Aye.
There you go. Thank you. Any public comments on non-agenda items? All right. Onto our consent calendar. Number seven.
You just have two tonight.
Okay, so posting planning commission regular meeting and approve the minutes for the December 9th. Can I get?
I'll make a motion to approve both 7A and 7B.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Excluded consent calendar items?
Correct.
So do we over the public comments on non-agenda items?
Yeah, we did.
Okay.
Yep. Public items on the continued from previous meeting?
Yeah.
And, okay, new public hearings, 10A. John, please.
Okay, 10A is a project over at One Chestnut Lane. It is for zoning case number 22-91. And it is a request for the approval of a site plan review for a 264-square-foot covered patio and outdoor kitchen. There's a conditional use permit for the use of the structures and variance requests to construct in the front yard and to waive the requirement for a stable and corral set-aside area. Again, the property is located at One Chestnut. And let me just get my computer to start working here. The property is located on the western side of the city of Rolling Hills, north of Crest, off of John's Canyon Road. This shows a vicinity map with the proposed, the project site in the middle. Notices were sent out to residents within 1,000 feet, owners of the 1,000-feet radius of the subject property. The property is zoned RAS 2. It's about 2.3 acres. There's a one-building pad on the site, which is about 12,000 square feet. The existing residence is about 4,000 square feet, built in 1973. There's also detached garage, storage, which is attached to the garage, 275-square-foot swimming pool and spa, some pool equipment, and the service yard. The application, again, is for site plan review for that 264-square-foot covered patio and outdoor kitchen. Conditional use permit variances are included. This is a development table, which is part of the staff report. And you can see that the proposed covered patio is what the planning commission is considering tonight. It does add about 0.3% of the structural coverage to the property, which is 5.7 of the total structural coverage for the entire property. In terms of the other calculations, it is under the maximum for structural coverage. The maximum is 20%, and it's at 5.7. For the total lot coverage, which includes the structural and the flat work, including the driveway location, the maximum's 35%. It's currently a 23.1. It's a 0.3% increase, bringing you to 23.6. And disturbance does not change the property. The site is already disturbed. The location of the outdoor structure is in a graded or disturbed area already. So that remains at 26.3. This shows the site plan, Chestnut being on the top portion there, north being up. There is a driveway that connects Chestnut up to the building pad above, where you have the residence, the detached garage, and the 264-square-foot outdoor kitchen. That area there shows the three easement, that orange line, and the property lines are located there in the red. So you can kind of see that the outdoor structure is away from the property lines. The green there is the setback areas, the front setback on top, you have the sides and the rear. That blue line there shows the front yard. According to our code, anything past the leading edge of the residence is considered the front yard. So you can see the post, the structure actually encroaches into that front yard area. And that's what the variance is for. This is a close-up of that site plan area, 50-foot front yard setback. The leading edge of the house is 107, 107 feet. And so the structure is closer to the front yard, to the roadway easement than the existing residence. The structure is already built, as we went there on the field trip this morning. I know Commissioner Kardnis did drive by the site. This shows 2019 on the left, and you can see that there's already a graded pad over there. It looks like a fire pit or something in that location. 2023, this is what it looked like when that covered patio was still there. It's since been demolished. And this is in 2021. You can kind of see that there's nothing there in February, and in November, there is that covered structure. These are a couple pictures of the covered patio when the covered patio was there. Again, it's since been demolished, so that's no longer there. They are looking to reconstruct the covered patio. There are four posts there. RHCA wanted to make those wider, larger. They also wanted a more steep pitch on the roof. Right now, it's sort of flat. They wanted to see a 4-to-12 pitch. So these are the elevations of the proposed structure there with the wider post and the steeper pitch, 412 roof pitch. Floor plans of the outdoor kitchen, you got a grill, a sink, refrigerator, some seating area. We find that the project is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, subject to Section 15303, Class 3, for new constructions and accessory structures. Our recommendation is that the planning commission open the public hearing, take public testimony, close the public hearing, and discuss the project. If you wish to approve the project, we have included the resolution number 2024-01, provided for your consideration. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions?
Nope.
I had two quick questions. I didn't actually realize the roof was on it at one point in time. I know they took it down. I thought it was some kind of a trellis. But, and I get the point from the association, but what's your opinion, John, that if it wasn't in the front yard setback and was built properly, would it have been an administrative review from your standpoint?
It wouldn't have been an administrative review. The reason for the variance is because it is past that leading edge of the house, so it is in the front yard. And it's also 264 square feet. Actually, it was 245 square feet when it was built. They're demolishing it, and because of RHCA's requirements, it's slightly bigger, 264. But since it's over 200 square feet, it does require a conditional use permit for the planning commission. And it's also in the front yard, so it requires a variance.
And, I'm sorry, the roof structure before was how big and what is proposed?
245. And what's proposed is 264. My understanding is because it's a flatter roof before, it was less square footage. They made it a steeper roof, covering pretty much the same area, so I guess surface area increased because of that.
Okay.
Good, okay. Open up to the public, any comments? Please come up, state your name and address.
Yeah, Alfred Visco, 15 Sutcliffe. I'm actually here on the next item, but this comment will be applicable to the next item also. I don't know if you get into this kind of a detail at this stage, but this outdoor kitchen, I'm hoping that there's not going to be any open fire on that kitchen. I'm assuming that the grill will be something other than a gas burner. Not that I'm opposed to gas burners, per se, it's fine inside a residence. But I don't think we need any more open flame in this city, given the high fire risk. So I don't know if that's the kind of detail you get into at this stage, but that's my only comment.
That's a good question, but no, it's not under our purview. The actual makeup of it is association, so we're just really talking about where it is on the site is under our purview. But thank you. Any others? All right, closed public comments and up to us here. So, and Sean, you got by it, right?
Yeah.
You had good questions today on the horses, but I think we answered that.
We haven't really addressed the horse part, but I think as far as this, as long as they're keeping the kitchen where it is and they're just adding the roof and coming into compliance, I think I would be in favor of it going forward. Did we discuss the second part? The set-aside or?
I think that's a little bit of a question, maybe for staff here, is on, we discussed today, John, the corral set-aside and the barn set-aside. How does that relate to where this is? Was it ever considered?
Yeah, so according to the code, you're required to either build a stable and corral or provide a set-aside area for a future stable and corral. In this case, because of the slopes on the property, you have pretty steep slopes. It makes it really difficult to put, to find a location for a stable set-aside area. The minimum is 1,000 square feet. You can see some where it's located there, that's actually in the front yard. So even if you put it in that location where the outdoor kitchen covered patio is located, it would require a variance because it is in the front yard. If you push it out further to the right there, you get closer to the setback area, and the land also becomes steeper. If you put a bath behind the pool, down the bottom over there, they have some steps and a patio area there. And as you saw, it was sort of steep in that location also. So you need about a four-to-one slope in order to put a set-aside area there. They'd have to do grading and tear out what they have.
Seems to me that at a prior visit for some of the construction that they determined that, I mean, I looked, there's no way to put a set-aside even on paper for, as much as I'd love to see it. We just don't see it happening on that property.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree, and I think it's not even a safe location for horsekeeping. Much as we dislike granting variances on this level, I do agree that this is not a proper site. It's just too steep, and access to the trail is down John's Canyon and further away, so.
But we're not being asked to approve a set-aside today, right?
That's correct. You're asking to waive the requirement to put a set-aside.
It hasn't been waived in the past.
Yes, there are, there are examples in the past where the planning commission waived the requirement.
For this property?
For this property, no.
I did, I did look at this years ago for something, and I can't remember what it was, but it was not this, and it was not brought up at that time on the barn.
Okay, so we're specifically being asked to waive the set-aside requirement?
No, I think we're not asking to waive it. We're asking, just, they're asking just for approval of the cabana, correct? Right.
Yeah, they're asking for approval of the cabana. Again, it was already built. They had torn down the roof.
No issue with that. I'm just, I'm asking for clarity for the resolution 2024-1. Does that include a waiver for set-aside?
It includes a waiver for set-aside, yes.
Okay.
I believe it's in the front yard setback, it's half of it anyway. And if they rebuilt it correctly, I think it'd be a benefit to what they had before, for sure. So it was nice that they took it down.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2024-01.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Sure. Commissioner Cooley.
Approve.
Commissioner Kardnis.
Approve.
And Vice Chair Kirkpatrick.
Yes.
Thank you. Zoning case 23-100.
Okay, I'll get started with this. Stephanie will give the presentation. She'll set up her PowerPoint on the screen. But while she does that, just to give you some background on this, zoning case 23-100, it's for a site plan review to demolish an existing residence. The applicant is looking to construct a new 4,870-square-foot residence with a detached garage, conduct non-exempt grading, and expand the residential building pad. They're also looking to create a new stable building pad, construct a 1,010-square-foot swimming pool, build retaining walls, exceeding a height of three feet up to a maximum height of five feet. And there's other improvements as well. There's conditional use permits for construction of a 1,585-square-foot stable and relocation of existing driveway and apron. And there's also variances to exceed the 40% disturbance and 35% lot coverage requirements on a property located at Forest Spur Lane. I'll turn it over to Stephanie.
Good evening. As you can see, the subject property is located at the southwest portion of the city. Subject property is located off of Spur Lane, just past Crest Road West and then Centring, and then you return onto Spur Lane. And everybody within 1,000-foot radius were sent notices, hearing notices on, I think it was January 6. So a little background on the project. The zoning is RAS 1. The net lot area is 47,063 square feet. It's 1.8 acres. There's an existing 3,525-square-foot single-family residence that was built in 1951. And the existing residence is 14 feet from the front roadway easement, 24 feet from the northeastern side property line, 25 feet from the northwestern, northwestern property line, and then it's 288 feet from the rear property line. The residence was built in 1951, and in 1962, the planning commission approved a variance for an addition. As you can see, this is the existing site plan. This is where the existing driveway is. So it's a longest extended driveway that you enter at the, right when you pass Spur Lane right here. There's Centring and then Spur Lane. So the existing driveway is right here, accessible right, right on the northeastern side. The applicants are proposing to relocate this existing driveway, apron, and driveway to the northwestern corner right here.
And the RHCA easement?
Yes, and it's also located, it's going to be located in the RHCA easement. They're requesting variances to encroach into the RHCA easements and into the site setback. And as you can see, this is the existing building pad. It's a very constrained lot. The existing building pad, I believe, is 7,620 square feet at this time. The applicants are proposing to expand this building pad probably about 90 feet out, and they're going to add an additional 4,890 square feet to the existing building pad. About to this grade line right here is where the limited grading will. As John explained earlier, the project, the applicants are requesting a site plan review for the demolition of the existing residence. They'll construct a new 4,870-square-foot residence with a 665-square-foot garage. The existing building pad will be expanded. The new residence does meet the requirements for reduced setbacks on a small lot. The, there's also the site plan review for 1,110-square-foot swimming pool and spa and 7,264 square feet of new hardscape. Grading will be balanced on site, but the total grading for this project is 7,600 cubic yards. Site plan review is also required for the second stable building pad. There, the project proposes a secondary building pad that's going to be located at the south portion of the parcel. The project also has a site plan review for retaining walls, five-foot maximum and two-and-a-half-foot averages. Conditional use permit for a 1,585-square-foot two-story stable with a loft, a secondary driveway access to the stable, which is accessible from Centring Road, and a 900-square-foot stable. Variances are also being requested to exceed the 35% lot coverage and 40% disturbance. The new main driveway is going to, the new main driveway, which is located on Spur Lane, will encroach into the 20-foot side setback and into the RHCA easement. Structural coverage, which is proposed, is total structural coverage, no structural coverage, is 8,733 square feet. Flatwork coverage is 8,944 square feet. This, this, it does exceed by 4%. So a variance is being requested for the flatwork coverage to exceed the maximum by, it's, the maximum's 15% and they're proposing 19%. So they do need a variance to exceed the maximum flatwork coverage by 4%. The total lot coverage is, structural lot permitted, is 18,139 or 38,000, 38%, 38.5%. And also, the applicants are requesting variance for disturbance. The additional disturbance is going to be 67%. So it exceeds the 40% by 27.93%. There's two building, there's, building pad one is going to be expanded. The total proposed square footage will be 12,150 square feet. And then for building pad two, which will be the new building pad, that's, the stable pad will be 4,140 square feet. And this right here, this is the, this is an aerial photograph of the proposed, of the project site. This right here is the area where the second building pad is being proposed. The, there was a secondary driveway that is, you can probably see it better on the next slide. Okay, here's a better picture. This is a secondary driveway right here that is accessible off of Centring Road. There's two driveways that were presented to the planning commission on December 11th. And this one right here, the second, this driveway, which is relocated from the northeast portion to the northwest portion, that was approved by the planning, by the traffic commission. Hasn't been approved by the Rolling Hills Community Association yet, but it has been approved by the traffic commission. The secondary driveway right here was denied by the traffic commission. The traffic commission didn't approve it because they had concerns with the safety, the guardrails, and the draining, their drainage, there was drainage issues. So I believe the traffic commission recommended that staff work with the applicant to, you know, come up with a different plan for the relocation of this proposed driveway. This is sections, this is the north elevation. This is looking at the house from the north. This is the west elevation, so you can see the garage. So right here is south elevation. So this would, this is.
Back of the house. That's the back part of the house.
Yeah, the back part of the house, south elevation. And this is the east elevation. Here's the proposed stable. It's a two-story stable. Total square footage of the stable is over 1,500 square feet. And the applicant is proposing to cut into the existing slope about 10 feet for the stable. And here's the grading. The project proposes a total of 7,600 cubic yards of grading, 3,800 cubic yards of cut and 3,800 cubic yards of fill. Grading is needed to expand the existing building pad to support the swimming pool and the stairway and, and this is, this is a pavilion. It's an outdoor pavilion. It's going to be an outdoor covered pavilion. As you can see, the top, the project proposes a 10-foot cut into the slope for the stable. And then for the building pad right here, this is the building pad, proposed building pad, it's about an eight-foot cut into the existing grade. There has been a preliminary landscape plan. There are existing trees in front of the property that are going to be, that are protected, and they will remain. The project is, proposes 17,786 square feet of existing landscaping that will be altered. And it proposes 39,883 areas of new landscape. Here's the landscaping plan for the bottom half. That's for the swimming pool and then for the proposed stable area. On January 6, 2024, public notices were sent out to all the residents within 1,000-foot radius. We did receive one letter today from Mrs. Maureen Hill. She dropped off a letter this afternoon expressing her concerns with the proposed location of the new stable. She lives at 11 Centring Road, which is right below the location of the proposed stable. The project is categorically exempt. It's determined categorically exempt pursuant to SEQA Section 15303, Class 3, new construction of a single-family residence and accessory structures. So our recommendation is to open the public hearing and receive public testimony, discuss the project, and then direct the applicant and staff. If there's any additional questions, we also have the architect here who's going to also do a presentation. And so that concludes my presentation.
Stephanie. Guys, any questions?
You did, any part of the variances for retaining walls? I can't recall on both sides of the property, or the old.
It was part of the site plan review.
Right. Okay.
It said five, averaging two and a half, is that right? Five at the highest, two and a half?
Is that?
Go back to the.
It's good, we can ask the.
Okay.
Yep. Good. Anyone from the public? Please come up. Name and address, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Luis de Moraes. My company is Enviro Techno Architecture. I'm the architect for the project. So thank you, Stephanie, for a great presentation, very detailed, and John as well. So I just put a couple images to highlight some of the considerations on the project. So, but, is this mouse working? So just a few items that were discussed, considered in designing this project. So the existing house, as you probably visited, I didn't have the opportunity to meet with you both. We met earlier today, but it's in really bad shape, so it needs to be torn down. Part of the house is located within the front yard setback. So in order to comply with the required setback of 30 feet, it would push the house, or pretty much anything that we do, into a floating airspace in the back. The lot, as you may recall, slopes in two directions, north-south, and then east-west. So it's a very challenging, very difficult lot. So in order to try to accommodate the setback and design a reasonable house and be able to get a little bit of amenity in the back, we worked with Dembold, who is here, and can also help us with any technical questions that you might have beyond. and can also help us with any technical questions that you might have beyond me in terms of what would be the best or, or, or most logical way to, to work with the grade and try to accommodate all the requirements. And in this case, because of the nature of the site, we're actually required to put in retaining walls on all four sides. So it's very tricky because we're creating a balance from two sides and then front and back. So we did quite a bit of studies to come up what we felt was reasonable in which it basically lowers from the front side the grade down to seven feet, at the back six feet, and then provide us with a little bit of a bigger pad than exists. There's no, there's no backyard in this property. In accommodating the setbacks and the unusual twenty-five-foot easement on the west side, we ended up with a very narrow net area to build. So about eighty-five feet wide. So let me jump into this. The existing residence thirty-five twenty-five, our addition is thirteen forty-five beyond that number. So very reasonable for a new house. And then the other aspect of our design is that the existing ridge of the current house is about at the same height of the new proposed height. So we're pushing the pad down, which will also cause all the walls, the plate, to be much lower than the existing. So the house is basically lower than, than the existing height. Grade elevation, like I said, thirteen oh seven, thirteen oh six, down to about thirteen hundred. And then what will we accomplish by lowering this pad? So one compliance with the front yard setback and also the fact that, I don't think any housing in Rolling Hills, you want to be fifteen feet from the roadway. That's just not appealing to have a housing in Rolling Hills that you're fifteen feet. So complying with the thirty feet is desirable to us and that's what we pursued. The other aspect to that is that by lowering the pad, the driveway would have been too steep if we kept it on the same side. And it would force them to have to back up into the road, which is not safe. Steep and not safe backup. So by placing the driveway on the other side, we're just starting off at a lower elevation, which will give us the run to go at a slope ratio that will meet not only fire department requirement. It's still steep, but will meet fire department requirement and also appropriate transition areas for low cars. So, and then the other aspect to provide the driveway is that we can turn around within the site to come out face first and also to be able to park a couple of cars off the street. So in the driveway, if we need for, you know, they have kids that probably at some point will be driving cars. The second pad creation is really for the stable and the corral. So, but I wanted to create a couple more slides. Chair Kirk Patrick was asking me a couple of questions about the retaining walls and the grade on the side yard this morning, so I went ahead and put together. So if you look at section A here, this is in green, hopefully you can see it, okay? In green is the natural grade. So then this is the side that we're building up on the right side, on, on the side here. So this is the natural grade, this is how it's being built up to the house over here. And then on the opposite side, east side, so the grade is higher where we're cutting with the retaining wall. And then with a two-to-one slope, natural slope, we're mitigating to meet the natural grade once again.
I'm sorry, how, how deep is the dotted line down to the base?
Very front to back, but I would say, you know, from the dotted line to the new finish for elevation, I would guess about approximately seven feet, eight feet. So with the retaining wall height plus a two-to-one slope, we're able to mitigate that. Some areas the wall is going to be four, five feet the maximum. Some areas the, the wall is going to come down to average out at the thirty inches. So around the.
You're going to do a cut of seven, eight feet and you're only going to retain the wall at max is at five?
That's correct, because you're sloping to the wall, that's right. So I also wanted to show you a couple of extra diagrams. The blue is the existing footprint and then in green is the new one. So it's showing what our addition is, is thirteen hundred and forty-five square feet beyond. So if you were to pack all that blue area together in a box, thirteen forty-five is the additional square feet. And then to make it a little more legible, the pad, what we're proposing to expand, this will be the new pad expansion and then the new pad below for the corral's table. So with that, our project, we have no impact, view impact to the neighbors. We have no privacy impact to the neighbors. We have a very constrained lot, very difficult lot. We have preliminary approval by the Homes Association in the design. We have approval for the Spur Lane access by the Traffic Commission. We are going to be, Dan Bolton is here. We've been working on potentially some mitigation measures for access down, down below. So we're, we're working on that. We're talking to Vanessa, who is the consultant for the Traffic Commission to see what we could do. So if you are concerned about approving the, the, the stable at this point, I would love for you to condition that, that we are approved with the condition that Traffic Safety Commission accepts a proposal to that so we can continue on, if nothing else, with the house above. And we are already approved by the Fire Department for water and access. So we work very hard to try to come up with a project that is reasonable within these constraints and we hope you can support us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Have you received approval from the Community Association for using the easement with the driveway?
We are, we have an application currently on and we submitted. We're working with Catherine on that. We don't have approval on that yet.
If they don't grant it, what would this do to your plan as it is now?
We, we could, but then we did studies because we obviously needed to make sure that that was, you know, that we had a backup option. We can push the driveway out of the easement, which will cause our driveway to be a lot steeper. So that's one possibility. The other possibility that we're not crazy about is if we were to do a straight-on shot, which would be backing up, we potentially would raise the garage and not have the garage at the level of the house, which it's not preferable because of operation moving things and, you know, shopping in and out. And we want to get that extra parking for, off, off the road parking. So we do have a couple backup options that we can study, but we, you know, we hope to make a good case to the, and use the road easement as a road, as a driveway. So.
When you did that, the second option, and you moved the driveway out of the easement and you were saying if you kept the garage on the same level, but the house, it'd be currently about where the house level is now rather than cut.
Right, so nothing would change. Yeah, so we studied that. So what would happen if you're looking at the driveway here? We would push it out here and then the slope here would be steeper. So Dan Bolton and I looked at this as a backup with also the Deborah Ritchie.
Unless the, the footpad of the, footprint of the house remained where it was or was risen, or kept where it is, I should say, rather than cut, because you're cutting it and then raising and using that dirt to fill in down below, is that correct?
Correct, so that was part of it is being able to use some of the earth that we're cutting to be able to expand a little bit of our pad in the back. So it's kind of a, a lot of different aspects to this equation.
But you wouldn't have to cut as much if you kept the, the, if you did move the driveway in and not make it as steep, make it somewhat where it is now.
Well, the cut is not a result of the driveway at all. The cut is really they're pushing the house back to meet the thirty-foot setback. And also would cause the house to be hanging off the back. So the lowering the house will reduce our grading in being able to expand and, and have something that we can walk out at the back without falling over.
Okay, I understand.
So just to be clear, I don't, there's, there's a lot of contingencies here. So I don't think this is something that we'll probably end up being able to vote for an approval on tonight. Barn stuff will, will set aside for now, but you do need HOA permission. We can't approve a plan with anything in the HOA easement without that approval. But I, it's a difficult lot and it's, it's challenging. I walked it and you guys are doing some interesting stuff to try and accommodate for the terrain, et cetera. The biggest challenge is, and I like the, the points that you gave about moving it, you know, away from the street. It's always nice. There's a massive amount of, of disturbance to, to create the, the structure and then the retaining space as well. I assume that the HOA will probably give you permission to swap the driveway from one side to the other. I don't, I don't know any, any reason why they wouldn't. Because it's in the easement currently, right, on the, on the.
The other side, yeah.
But we've got to figure out how to, to work within the confines. There's no doubt that to move forward on this property, you're going to need variances, how significant they are and what you want to accomplish. We're going to be here to help guide you through. But I think that, that's my biggest challenge. We first have to get the necessary approvals and I would, we're happy if you want to separate the barn away from the, the, the main residence and just pursue the main residence while the Traffic Commission sorts out access to the barn, that's fine. But if we just focus on the main residence, for me, I'd like to see if we can't figure out how to minimize the disturbance as much as possible on that lot. There's going to be massive disturbance, I get it, and like to see the house move away from the street. So we'd make concessions on that. I will make concessions on that and I won't speak for the other commissioners, but I think what we should try and accomplish here is, is talking about different options and, and concerns that we have so that you're provided with as much feedback as possible so you can get the necessary approvals from the HOA, Traffic Commission, if you pursue the barn.
But, but if I have, if I have a solution that without the HOA, which doesn't impact the design of the house at all, do we still need to wait for them to be able to come up with a discussion?
In terms of the driveway, yes, so.
Right.
Because that's something we would be approving. We can't approve a driveway in the easement because that's, that's the HOA's domain. But what I would, what I'd recommend is that we, we just discuss the project as whole, give you as much information as possible so that you can take that and, and again, get the necessary approvals from the HOA, Traffic Commission, if you're going with, move forward with the barn. And then, you know, if there's anything that we can do to, to, to restructure that pad so that, you know, natural terrain is a big thing for us and trying to maintain that as much as possible. It's never easy and, and it frequently requires variances. But we don't want to take a hillside and cut into it and create a massive pad. That disturbance was like sixty-seven percent, I think.
Sixty-eight, yeah.
Significant number. But I also want to work with you to, to get.
Just a couple of little points, if I may. So this corner here, if you notice, this is about five feet, which is what the Fire Department require. So this, and then when it was presented earlier, there were ninety feet. It's because the line goes at an angle. This is five feet at this corner of the pad. And then I would say on average halfway, it's about fifty feet to be able to fit the pool in and a little bit of a deck. The rest of it is just to meet the natural grade. So the edge of our pad, if you look in the, in the other diagram. So that's, that's really the edge of the pad. The rest, a little bit beyond, what's beyond that is just be able to get the two-to-one to meet the natural grade. So, so anyway, just to consider that, we're at five feet, just the minimum Fire Department requirement in.
You're talking about the four-feet requirement for access around the building?
No, the Fire Department requires that we have a five-foot area around the building for them to fight fire. That they can walk around. So I'm saying that this, this is the retaining wall that allows us the five feet. So this corner, we're at the bare minimum of where we need to be. Again, meeting the thirty-foot setback in here. So, and other than the pool, I mean, this is, this is about a twenty-foot. Twenty-foot patio plus the pool, twenty with an infinity edge. It's about fifty feet halfway through. And then it gets a little wider because the lot is, this is pretty much on grade in here at the backside. So, so it's a, it's a, it's a tough one because we're, every direction this thing is going down, so.
I think I'd like to hear from Mr. Bolton if he's got a minute here, but.
I would love to. So, go ahead.
I'm Dan Bolton, Bolton Engineering, we're at two five eight three four Narbonne. On behalf of the applicant, I'm the civil engineer for the project. Here to answer any questions you might have. I did hear Commissioner Cardenas's question about the retaining walls. All the retaining walls are proposed to be two and a half to three feet and averaging the two and a half or less, with the exception of the wall that Mr. Morales was just pointing out there at the corner of the residence. At that point, in order to get that five-feet access around the building, we do get to that maximum five-foot height. It tapers in both directions, as you can kind of see, to get to the, the average of two and a half, so.
Yeah, the height of the retaining walls is one thing. If you're not cutting seven, eight feet at the north end of the property, then you're going to have less fill, you're going to be creating less of a building pad, right?
Sure.
Further down you go, you're going to be extending to the south part of the property. That's, that was my point is that, and retaining walls would, in theory, be reduced at that point as well. It just, it seems like it's a, it's a significant disturbance to create a, a pad big enough for a roughly five thousand square foot home plus garage plus pool plus command and lookout. So on a lot that's very challenging to, to put any structure on.
No doubt it's challenging and I think I made comments today, I've just, I haven't been on, after I don't know how many years I've been doing this, this is a lot of dirt just moving around. And part of that, and the disturbance percentage is big, but that's also because it's just barely over an acre. You know, if it was two acres, it'd be half that, right? So I get that. But it seems very constrained and I was just concerned because you had such a, excuse me, a, on the left-hand side of that drawing up there, the level that you would go down from visualizing where the floor plate was up to that fence of the property next door, even with the slope, I was just, it's, it's just a huge cut. When, when we're asked to go with a natural terrain, this is the opposite of that. That's when I was two rams going on both sides of the property. We're not going with any natural terrain here. So it just, it just, we're being honest, it just made us feel funny. We've just not seen it like this. I think the overall, I think they're very creative on, on your steps. Very good presentation, by the way. I think you addressed everything we discussed today, so thank you for listening. It just makes me very nervous about what it looks like on both sides of the property based on, we're manipulating the lot.
So great.
And it was just, that was the feel today. So kind of a question, because I think it's more to your point relative to cutting the lot, is there any mitigation on either raising it in one area or lowering it in another that would mitigate the, not just the disturbance, but the height, height variation between on both edges of the property?
Yeah, I mean, to, to speak to the, the level disturbance concern. This lot's unusual in a number of ways, one of which is the fact that it is, the geometry of it being a, a long and narrow lot. Um, means that the, when we compute the percentage of disturbance according to the Rolling Hills code, the denominator is the net lot area. Which is the, the gross, the, the property lines, less the easement and then the road easement or easements and then ten feet in on all sides. Well, you can imagine that if you have a fairly square-ish lot, then the loss that you take by that net lot area reduction. Is less intrusive than if you had, the more long and skinny it is, the more you're losing. Another way to put it is that the more perimeter that you have relative to the area of the lot, the more you lose with that net lot area loss. And then that's compounded by the, as Luis was describing, the fact that the lot really does slope in two axes. It slopes in the long axis and it slopes in the, the, the short axis. And so from a civil engineering standpoint, um, it was a challenging design exercise to say, um, number one, how do we make it balance? How, where do we set that pad, um, as well as ensuring access? So you got to be able to get a driveway down to it, so as we start to manipulate the, the pad grade up and down, um, you know, either the driveway is getting too steep or it's not steep enough. And the, you know, now the, the cut fill balance is, is going out of whack. And then just to get a pad that, to be frank, you know, that, that can support a, a quote unquote, Rolling Hills house. You know, it's, it could be smaller, but you know, it's a fifty, five hundred square foot new construction is, um, it's certainly a healthy house for me. But you know, in terms of the, um, the, the kinds of things that I think people expect and want to live in, in Rolling Hills. And I, you know, I think the lot, with the exception of the, uh. Of the disturbance area variance. Um, you know, I actually thought the grading worked out pretty well. Um, and I think that the geometry is kind of, is at least in part what drives that, that disturbed area issue, so.
Respectfully, there's no Rolling Hills appropriate size homes. Some lots support twenty thousand square foot homes on them. We've got one coming up shortly and some lots are, are more unique in their character, to say.
Sure.
In our town, so we're, we're trying to, to work with applicants to fit the right size home in terms of disturbance and, and heights and setbacks and everything on the properties. It seems like we're trying to do a lot on a very challenging, uh, topographical space.
Sure.
Why don't we leave it there for now unless ask for, and, and thank you. I think, uh, I may have an idea of a solution for the time being, but I think I'd like to see if anybody else in the public, uh, would like to come up and say anything. Thank you, Dan, appreciate it.
Um, I'm Paul Rieske, Two Spur Lane, next door neighbor. And, um, I've been driving past this now for the last couple of years and I looked at what they did and I studied. I, I, I was at the meeting this morning, I saw me, and I looked at, uh, the plans this afternoon and how they've come up with this because, you know, I've. Next door, I'm like, what are they going to do, right? Because this thing's a mess. And, um, I'd like to encourage you a lot to, to make a decision quickly. Um, the, the house is a fire disaster and I don't want my new house to burn up because something happens over next door because it's all the old shake. One, I looked at the way it's going to, the view of it from my perspective, it's fine. It's, I actually am very excited about what they're doing. Um, let's see, and as far as the grading and all that, I know I dealt with some grading, but not to this level, obviously. And I, I don't personally have an issue with it at all. I think what they're doing, because again, when you reduce the denominator by your twenty-five foot setbacks and you have an acre to start with. And then you're trying to move just a, what I perceive as a relatively small amount of dirt, it doesn't seem to be that significant to me. And just share that with you because I know you guys are very concerned about it because it looks terrible on here because it's a small lot. And you're only looking at the top of the lot. So this little perspective you have here is probably what, five thousands or maybe twelve, fifteen thousand square feet? And they're moving not that much around, so just for what it's worth. And with that, I'll leave you, I encourage you, make a quick decision for them because I'm really getting tired of living at the other house.
On your house, by the way, which is interesting and it was actually kind of an interesting example is, you know, I have a slight canyon. Between, at the top of the picture there, between your home and their home, right? There's a slight canyon that goes down to your fence. If you look at your house and your entry and then you've got, I don't know what that structure is, but you've got it, you've got a part of the house, like almost a, 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 a story below, looks like about ten feet below. For example, that is actually, and you don't want things looking two-story, but that's actually working with the hillside. Rather, I take it that they're doing exactly the same, that they're actually building up to make it level with your front. That, and in their case, that's the opposite of what you did. You're working with the terrain and I think that's what I'm trying to get across is that's what we're used to. That's why we have several homes, in fact, there's one right next to the Crest property we're going to talk about. That they have a, I think it's only six thousand foot house, but they have it stepping down the hillside to say it goes with the hill.
Well, that makes, I, I understand.
That's what we're kind of looking at, except, you know, we're talking about five and ten acre lots versus one and I, I get the challenges, but.
Two and a half, so, so it's, it's different, totally different perspective. And my house is also a little bit smaller, not much, but it's, when it's done. So I looked at it, like I said, and I, I, I went away with the impression that what they're doing is, not only that, but it's, it's going to be a gorgeous house and it'll be very appropriate for the neighborhood. So I'm excited to have them, so quicker you can get that everywhere.
Thank you.
I'll say a few words, that's okay.
Okay.
Um, I'm Jan Lukic, I'm the applicant and apologies for my husband, he is dealing with a transaction at work because he would have been here also, but he had to go up north. Um, well, like, we're excited. We've been residents of Redondo Beach for the last twelve, almost thirteen years and actually when we bought in Redondo Beach, my husband wanted to buy here. But I selfishly needed, had toddlers and needed to get to the freeway as quick as possible to get to downtown LA, so we ended up in Redondo. And now thirteen years later, I think we're finally coming where we originally wanted to come. So we're excited. We have three kids, we have two teenage boys who are tennis players, so they spend lots of time in this area already. And we have a ten-year-old who's in fifth grade, so selfishly, from a timing perspective, I need to get that girl in school up here before she gets to high school with no friends. So just thinking that's, as we think about moving this forward. Um, the lot's a challenge, as we've said, and when, when we bought it, we knew it was a challenge, right? And we talked to Louis and we got Dan involved and like, okay, how, how can we build the home that will really support our family and our lifestyle? But also be respectful to the community and to the land and to the environment. And I think they did a great job. I think it's reasonable given the lot that it's on, although it has some challenges and we knew there'd be some challenges. Our, the barn and the traffic commission and that stuff, we can put aside because we're focused on moving forward on the house. It's an eyesore, it's dangerous. I mean, my kids like to come out here and wander around, I'm like, it's not safe to wander around this lot. So the sooner that we can knock that house down and really build something that I think will be beautiful for this community is really what we're, we're focused on. So we thank you for your consideration and, and we'll work together to come up with the right solutions, but, um, we're excited. And I think you'll see that we'll be great members of your community, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else, please?
Yeah, real. Real quick, Alfred Visco, Fifteenth Centring Road. Usually, I can't imagine the last time I was down here in the planning commission, I think I've never been down here. Maureen Hill's letter that's in your file, she's at eleven, I'm at fifteen, so I'm all the way at the bottom. I'm at, I'm at where the official centering road, centering, uh, ends at the bottom of the cul-de-sac. As you know, the, the extension going, uh, west is actually a private driveway, so that's not really officially centering road. Um, I was here in the fire in two thousand nine and we needed to get out. This is the same issue I brought up with the traffic commission concerning the proposed access for the barn and stable on Centring Road. There is no good place, so I wanted to reiterate that. I'm glad to see that, that's getting, hopefully getting dropped, it's too small for me to see. So I don't know what the existing north-south slope is. Obviously, I'm not as concerned about the east-west slope, that's not my major concern. Uh, we really can't afford to have another, uh. Poppy trail issue. We cannot afford to destabilize that slope so that Centring Road is impacted. Uh, it's hard enough to get out of that, and another thing is, it's hard enough to get out, up and down Centring when we have, we have fog and we have a lot of fog in, in there. And, and a fire situation, having structures close to Centring possibly going on fire is not a good idea. Exit, exiting on Centring is not a good idea. Um, Centring Road was originally, when they, when they did the subdivision, to add all the houses down, which is now that private driveway. Centring Road was not designed, uh, they wanted the widened Centring Road, but they were told that, well, that's the only thing that's ever going to get developed on Centring Road. So you don't need the widened Centring Road. Um, the other issue was now that we're allowed ADUs and JDUs, even more, potentially more, uh, structures can be built down in that subdivision that's now in that private driveway. And that's the other reason they were allowed to do a private driveway, because they were told there wasn't going to be any more tri- traffic, so you didn't have to build up the county standards. So for, and I, I really, this is a traffic commission issue, I understand that. But you need to really understand the, the limitations on Centring Road with the existing, uh, structures and the existing amount of person, people that are living there. And with the adding on potentially ADUs and JDUs, it's even going to increase the, the traffic flow potentially. So I am absolutely opposed to any kind of structure that can exit on, on Centring Road. Uh, whether it's a stable, a barn, whatever you want to call, call it. The other thing is that we just can't destabilize that hill. Uh, we cannot take, uh, cannot be another poppy trail. Um, because there's no way I'm going to be able, my wife, who's eighty-two years old, there's no way we're going to be able to walk from a car parked on the north side of this landslide to get all the way down to Centring Road. For six months to a year, okay? Just isn't going to happen, plus I won't be able to get in and out, so, so. I understand that everybody wants to move forward on this. I did a major remodel of my house back in the nineties. I never appeared in front of the planning commission. I let my wife, my architect handle that because I knew I would go crazy, okay? I just knew that, so I just, I just backed off, I just let them handle, that's why this is the first time I've ever been in front of the planning commission. And we did a major remodel, took us years to get approval and we pushed dirt for three years, which did make our neighbors very happy, of course. But, so this is, as far as an existing fire hazard, I agree, it is an existing fire hazard. It should be immediately demolished and all of the, uh, tumbleweeds that are growing on the backyard should be removed. All the dead vegetation should be removed, all the now deteriorated, uh, fencing, which is not being upcut.
A little bit of a time.
I understand, but I agree that, that, that it is, as it exists today, it is a fire hazard and it needs to be handled. Now you guys, if you want to give them a demolition permit to go ahead and demo the thing, that's fine.
We could, we, yeah, yeah. So two things, three things actually, really quickly. One is on the barn, we've kind of set that aside, so any of the traffic concerns you have will be addressed at a, at a point in time. So we're not really addressing any more of that in terms of the traffic on Centring, that's not, not under our purview. Under the existing house, there's going to be hopefully a, a, another house in that. Unlike poppy trail, I don't know of any slide area where this, right Dan, or where this is. So this is very different than that. And then anything that's proposed for this, any new house compared to any old house in the city is all great because it's all the bedrock, it's all the foundations, it's all done correctly by the county. So every time we've allowed something to happen, we haven't had any issues relative to a new house. So that will be addressed. As it relates to the fire code, they actually brought it up today, can we go ahead and do a, a, a demo permit? And the answer was no, uh, until we have actually a permissible house, so they will not do that. I don't know if that's a good question for staff on if there's exceptions to, if it's a fire hazard, um, and we can approve a demo permit beforehand. But it's a separate issue and that hasn't been brought up to us tonight, uh, as, as part of a, uh, an, an ask of us to approve that. That hasn't, and that's not even under our purview to allow a demo permit. So those are the three things hopefully I've addressed with you down below.
I'm retired now, but back in the day when dinosaurs used to rule the earth, I used to be a chemical engineer. And I used to work for Bechtel Power Corporation, which as you know, Bechtel is one of the biggest engineering and construction firms in the world. And I dealt with civil engineers and civil structural engineers all the time.
Okay, so, but.
And I know exactly what you're saying, however, however, uh, as Maureen points out, we are in a dynamic situation. Concerning what's going on south of us in the nature reserve.
Totally hear you, it, but it's not under our purview to make a recommendation based on soil condition and, and/or any kind of potential slide. So we have to stick to the issue tonight and we're way over our timer.
All I'm doing, since I was retired, I'm a retired attorney, what I'm doing is I'm making the record, uh, whatever forum that, that this comes up. Present my concerns. Don't particularly care what the forum is, I'm going to present concerns over and over and over again. And the other thing is that fire, there's a fire pit also, including an outdoor, uh, an outdoor kitchen. So again, I understand that's not your area, but I'm going to make it for the record, it's just a bad idea to have a fire pit or a kitchen that has an open flame, okay?
Thank you, appreciate, thank you very much. Any more comments?
Yeah, I just have.
Well, please come up, you have to come up, please state your name and your address, please.
My name's Tao, I'm from Seventeen Crest. Yeah, I just have a.
Seventeen Crest. Okay.
Yeah, I just have very simple questions.
What's your full name?
Aldon.
Okay, Seventeen Crest, east or west?
Uh, east, yeah, my, uh, the question was simple, uh, so I would just want to know the, the regulation for, uh, maximum building story could be? Yeah, because I noticed the stable two-story, I like this idea very much because I think let's take advantage of the terrain and make the space use for efficient. Yeah, I, I just want to know how much.
I think what we should do is that, you should ask staff on a separate occasion, this isn't the forum to do that in terms of, uh, if you want to build, but they have all that regulation. We don't know that off the top of our heads.
We do allow lofts, et cetera, but that's something that you can discuss with.
In a barn?
Yeah.
Yeah, their barn regulations and you just need to get a copy of what those regulations are? Yeah, we'd be happy to provide that. Any other on Centring or Spur Road comments? Okay, thank you. Close public?
So.
Who wants to start?
So this, this project's going to have to come back, um, to us. What I would ask of the applicant or representatives is, um, if they're willing to have us, um, you know, leave the, the item open, defer until next meeting. And have them decide if they want to keep the barn as part of the application or not. Depending on where they're at, the traffic commission, et cetera, they may be encouraged to separate that so that it doesn't create an issue. It leaves a set aside for that, which satisfies the requirements and not have to deal with, uh, access at this time. And then ask Bolton Engineering if they can look at, you know, any way to. Shift the, the plans to, to reduce the, and if the answer is no, the answer is no. But that's, that's what I would suggest we do in terms of guidance and request and get them back for something that could be approved potentially next meeting.
I agree, I also think it's, it may seem like a small thing, but you really need to get the community association's blessing on your driveway. And it may seem like we're holding you up because we're not going forward with that, but that could take longer in the long run. If they deny your request and then you're forced to go back and create new plans for us and to come back. So I think in a way, taking a breath and doing the, all this and coming back with solid approvals, so you know going forward what you're allowed to do. Would be a time saver, even though I know tonight it doesn't seem like it. And I, I know it's going to be a beautiful house and we're really excited that you're going to demolish that old one. And part of the reason it's nice to be on this. And part of the reason it's nice to be on this commission is we don't get to see these little neighborhoods very often if we don't live there. And there are so many houses like yours that are really ready to be, you know, just flattened and start over again. And I know it's going to be beautiful, and we'll come to an agreement on that. I appreciate your patience tonight.
Thank you.
So, I agree. I think where we're standing is, we'd like you to take a look at separating the barn and the house for the time being. Re-look at that driveway, please, and make sure you can get approvals, because it, rather than have the backup and going through that, I think I'd like to see, and if you could talk to Bolton Engineering about maybe shifting the house and, and working with, trying to either reduce in size or height the retaining walls, from my standpoint, and the disturbance, if that's possible. But Commissioner Cardenas actually hit the nail on the head. If it's not, and you want to stick to the initial, that's okay, too. I think what we're trying to do is take a pause, because it's, it was right in our face today. It was one of those that we just didn't feel right about, to be really frank. And it's not your fault. I think you did a great job in your presentation, as I said earlier, was great. It was spot on. So I think we're just at a pause on, it was a lot of disturbance, and a little bit of our fault just take us by, by force there. It just, it was a lot for us to take in. And I think the flagging on the retaining walls is something that I would, hopefully you could improve on. The plate height, all that, I could get. Ridge height, I got that part. But the retaining walls and understanding, particularly on the two sides, how that affects the other two properties, that, I kept asking my question, I kept locating, and I do this too for a living. So I was not getting that. And, uh, so I think that would be great if you can come back. We're not trying to delay you. I'd love to say yes, but this is one of those that just needs a second look, I think. And Commissioner Cardenas has said that a couple of times, and I agree with him there. Okay? So rather than take a vote and say no or yes, I think we'd like to take a pause and just, I hate to say it, but delay you one more month, and let's see what we can resolve, maybe, on looking at that. And again, up to you where you come back on, on all of it. Okay?
Would you like to motion the table the item?
Well, I'd like to make sure the applicants are okay with, you know, they can, they can request a vote if they weren't, but...
We'll continue the project.
So I'll, I'll make a motion to continue. Item ten B, until next scheduled meeting.
I'll second.
Vote call, please. Commissioner Cooley. Commissioner Cardenas.
Approved.
Vice Chair Kirkpatrick.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. All right. Ten C, zoning case twenty-three zero seven zero. Never seen this before.
Okay, item ten C. This is for twenty-three Crest Road East. It's zoning case number twenty-three dash zero seven zero. For site plan review, conditional use permit and variance. The property is located in the southern part of the city of Rolling Hills, south of Crest Road. This shows the, the project's site, along with the thousand-foot vicinity. Site's about six acres, and owners within a thousand feet of the subject property were given notice of the public hearing. Some background on the property. The, in 2017, the city council approved zoning case number nine zero two. Prior to that, it didn't go before the planning commission. The project back in 2017 was for an eleven-thousand-five-square-foot residence with the exact size for the basement, and included other, other improvements as well. And then in 2019, the planning commission granted a two-year extension to January twenty-third, 2021, per Assembly Bill fifteen sixty-one. They granted another extension to July twenty, uh, July twenty-two, 2022. However, in 2021, an application was submitted for zoning case number twenty-one dash eleven. That was for an eight-thousand-four-hundred-and-sixty-square-foot residence and the same-sized basement. That project went before the planning commission at the time. However, the property was sold to the current owner, and so we have the current proposal before you know. In summary of the approvals needed, there is a site plan review for the new residence, basement, attached garage, pool, and other appurtenances. There's a seventeen-thousand-seven-hundred-square-foot oval driveway. There's grading in the amount of twenty-eight-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty cubic yards total, balanced on-site. There's a conditional use permit. I'm sorry, I said, they actually do have a variance also for grading export, but I'll get to that later. Conditional use permits to allow for the nineteen-hundred-forty-square-foot stable, which, if you actually look at it, it's more of a mixed-use building. And we actually received the application after the notices were sent out for this meeting, but it is more of a mixed-use building. There's a two-thousand-square-foot corral, which is actually in the front yard, eight-hundred square-foot guest house. And for the variances, there's variances to allow the pool, stable, and corral in the front yard, to allow a portion of the corral in the front yard, front yard setback, and then retaining walls that exceed an average height of two and a half feet. There's also decks, patios, that look like they can be more than a foot above grade. They're supposed to be no more than twelve inches above grade, and there is some grading export associated with this project. There are three building pads proposed on the property. Building pad one would be the main building pad, thirty-thousand-square-feet in size, which would have the main residence, garage, pool, guest house, and the motor cart. Building pad two is for the stable, located in northwest corner of the property, and building pad three is for the accessory dwelling unit. Other improvements include the decks, covered porches, patios, walls, landscaping, concrete stairs, raised decks. In terms of lot coverage, disturbance and grading, the total lot coverage for structural and flatwork is thirty-seven-thousand-square-feet, or about fourteen percent of the total site, so it's under the thirty-five percent maximum permitted. The site, again, is about six acres in size. The total site disturbance is ninety-two-thousand-square-feet, or roughly thirty-five percent of the lot, which is forty, which is under the forty percent maximum permitted. And then again, there's twenty-eight thousand, roughly twenty-nine thousand cubic yards of grading. This shows the subject property. The, uh, the blue there is the property lines around the property. Crest Road is there at the very top. And you, you have a single driveway entrance into the property, which goes into that oval driveway, which gives you access to the stable on the northwest corner, the main residence, which is down south of that oval driveway. You have the guest house along the eastern property line, and the ADU in the front right corner there. Oh, and just, again, on this property, as in the other project, anything past the, the leading edge of the house is considered the front yard. So again, there is a variance for the swimming pool, stables, ADUs, there's a couple of retaining walls in the area as well. So anything developed above that dash red line does require a variance. In terms of grading, there's, again, about roughly twenty-nine thousand cubic yards of grading. There's going to be fifty-two-hundred cubic yards of non-exempt export. The red there shows the cut. The darker, the red, the deeper, the cut. The blue area shows the areas of fill. So what this is showing is the area for the proposed residence. There's, there's going to be a lot of cut there. They're going to take, be taking dirt from that location and then putting it in these blue areas shown there, especially there in this mound area here, a little bit on the barn area on the southern portion, southwestern portion, and some cut on the northern section. The ADU here is actually showing fill, but when you actually go on-site, it looks like it was more of a cut. So I'll talk about that a little bit more. There's some discrepancies in what's, what's being shown. This is a close-up of the driveway location. This driveway was approved by the traffic commission. They did approve a single driveway leading to the property. There were talks about, this morning, about the, the location of this knoll or mound area here. That area is about thirteen thirty-five feet elevation, which is roughly the same, same elevation as what you have on the road in that, that area. So that mound there would help screen the, the proposed residence down below as viewed from the street. These are just a couple of renderings of the proposed residence. We did include a variance, because it does appear that some of those patios there are decks, do sort of cantilever over, and according to the code, they're supposed to be flush on the, the grade. So there's parts there that do seem like they're a little bit higher than the, the grade. The very corner over there, we did mention that the basement, the basement sort of daylights out. There's a basement portion there that's underneath that apex portion, that little triangle portion there. These show some sections of the proposed project at the very top, and then the project that was approved back in 2017. This is that approved design that is now expired. But I just wanted to show that what's being proposed now is further setback from Crest Road as compared to the 2017 design. That design showed the 2017 pad, starting along that area there. The new pad location is located further back from Crest Road, and so they, they are able to kind of move that back. And so what that does is it, you know, creates, puts the house at a lower elevation. So from eighteen Crest Road, you sort of look over that area as opposed to the previous approval where a lot of that view is blocked. This is just another section going through there. I wanted to point out here, this is, the very top is actually the same as one here, but it's, it's blown up. I also wanted to point out, I guess that where that mound location is located, is located, they are looking to plant trees on top of that. So, um, you know, that was a concern, because when you plant trees, it's supposed to be under the roof, roof line of the house. And in this case, the roof line is actually lower than the, the grade. The bottom there is from the grading plans, and you can see where that fill is, the top of the mound is thirteen thirty-five. It is sort of level with Crest Road. This is the floor plan for the main residence, ground floor plan. There is a, I guess, a slorm or an area there where light can, can get in. There is an area down over here, which is outside. It's an outdoor deck. It will be covered, but as you can see on the basement plan, which is right over here, the basement is actually going to be underneath, or a portion of that basement is going to be underneath that, that outdoor patio, covered patio area. The way I understand the code, though, it has to actually be underneath the wall line of the building, the footprint of the building, and so that kind of comes out. But it will be underneath the covered patio area, and it's also away from the street, so you can't really see it, you know, from, from Crest Road. Also, that, the area where the garage is located, in this location, you'll have the basement below that as well, which is allowed. On the plan, I believe they call that like more of a mechanical area. Oh, I also wanted to point out, there is this little walkway that, that comes outside the house. So it comes outside from the covered patio, and on the basement floor plan, you can kind of see, it kind of comes out, and it daylights out to the slope. If there is a concern with that, I mean, there, there are ways to put that along the building line, so you don't have it projecting out so far from, from the building. In terms of the accessory structures, they are proposing a stable. There are some concerns with the stable that we discussed with the applicant, and one being that it looks, doesn't quite look like a true stable, looks more of a mixed-use building. And so they did have an application in to address the design of the stable being mixed use. For the guest house, it is about eight-hundred square feet, and there is a little kitchenette there. For the accessory dwelling unit, this is in the northeastern corner. They're showing a one-bedroom.
Before we move on, can you just clarify what the status is of the, the stable? Is it a mixed use or is it a stable?
So we're going to have to renotice for the, the public hearing. We'll have to renotice it as a mixed-use building, because when the notices got sent out, we noticed it as a, as a stable.
We could make a comment to that.
Yeah. I just wanted to put it in there.
Couple of elevations of the main residence. Again, just with these, we had some concerns about the, some of the, the areas sort of daylighting out, being cantilevered over. This is that apex portion where you have the basement down below. And these are some of the elevations for the accessory structures. They sort of show the, some of the, the same type of, like, cantilevering above the, the grade. So you have these little patio areas that are, um, above the proposed or existing grade. There was some questions about the site drainage. There is a natural drainage course located on the western portion of the lot in a blue line stream, which is part of planned, like, canyon system. There are two storm drain outfalls shown on the site plan on both sides, one on the east of the residence, the one on the south. They're down, they're located down slope from the, the proposed residence. This is part of the engineering drawings, and it does show which one is the erosion control outlet located down below. These are, these are actually older plans, but, um, so, uh, in terms of community, community communications, the project was noticed in the daily breeze on January fifth. Notices were also sent to residents within a thousand feet. This morning at the field trip, we had about seventeen members show up with this, in regards to this meeting, or to this project. Some of the issues of concern that are discussed in the staff report, one deals with the grading calculations in there. We just want to make sure that all the, the calculations are accurate. One of our concerns deals with the ADU, because on, I think on the calculations, the application, it says no grading. And then you look at the, the plans, and it actually shows fill, and then when you go out there to, to the site and you look at the silhouettes, it's showing cut. So we had identified that, and it's something that I think we need to bring back and make sure that they are accurate numbers. There's a concern with the guest house's proximity to the canyon. We walked the site this morning during the field trip. We took a look at that. The very corner of the guest house does look like it kind of encroaches into that canyon area, so there's going to have to be some fill there to lift, lift the grade. You know, our suggestion is really to pull that guest house back, so it's outside the canyon. I talked about the mound or knoll earlier. It is sort of level with Crest Road East. The very top of it looks like it does have the same elevation as Crest Road. That second part there is dealing with the trees, and on the preliminary landscape plan, they are showing coastal live oak, which can grow up to eighty feet tall. So if you have twenty or thirty trees located in that mound area in the very front, you know, that could create some view issues if trees get that big. The retaining walls, there's a number of retaining walls, one being along the stable, and that's the street side of the stable. And at first, I think when we went out there, it was a little, a little bit deceiving. I know we talked about it a little bit this, this morning, but just wanted to make you aware that there is a retaining wall there, I guess on the north side, northeast side of that stable. I think on the southwest side, it sort of daylights out, and it's sort, it's cantilevered over. They'll have to do some fill in that location. We had discussed the floor levels above grade. Some of those grades, as I showed, were the elevations. So we actually included that as part of the variance. There's that stable mixed-use building. Again, we'll have to renotice that so that stable comes back to you as a, as a mixed-use building. And there's also some calculations with the trellises that need to be addressed as well. That kind of goes back to the very top there with the grading calculations, just making sure that they're all consistent. With that, the project is category exempt. It's a single-family house developed on a legal, single-family residence, or a legal, single-family lot. So it's a Section one-five-three-zero-three, Class Three of the California Environmental Quality Act guidelines. That's for construction of a new, single-family residence and accessory structures. Our recommendation is that you open the public hearing to invite the public to comment, and then provide direction to staff and the applicant. We do recommend that you continue the public hearing, and staff will have to renotice the project to address anything else that kind of comes up, including that mixed-use building. That concludes my presentation.
Thanks, John. Please have any initial questions?
We have some time on this one.
Yes. All right. Time to open up to the public. Who would like to come forward?
As we're getting set up here, love to obviously hear from the applicant, the representatives, et cetera. There's a lot of residents, neighbors that have comments, state your name, address, et cetera. But also, let's keep the comments as quick and precise as possible so we're not all here till midnight. This is not going to be voted on this evening. This is going to be continued, so we will continue to have opportunities to dig into this further.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you, John. My name is Frank Escher. I'm the principal with Escher &amp; Ward in Architecture. We are based in Los Angeles. The address is 815 Silverlake Boulevard. And this is actually the second project that we're doing with Yuki Ogasawara, who is our client. And I will show very quickly some other images. Thank you, John, for the introduction. I'll try to make this full screen. I'm not very good with computers, so just... Do you know how to make this full screen? So it can't be full screen? All right. Okay, good. So this is an image of the site. You all know the property. This is the core team as it exists right now. Some of these people are here and I'll introduce them later. If I may, I'm going to, for two minutes, talk about some of our other work. So in addition to new buildings, houses, housing, a lot of articulated work, we do a lot of historic preservation work. So we restored the chemisphere, top left by John Lautner. We've worked on the Eames House. Top right, we restored the Paul Williams House. That is a house that Paul Williams built for himself. Bottom left is the John Lautner House, also a house that he built for himself. In the middle, in the bottom, that's the Richard Neuchtra 1929 Lovell Health House, which we are currently restoring. And at the bottom right, this is the A. Quincy Jones Tire House, which we restored for Yuki Ogasawara. That's her current house. And so of course, Paul Williams and A. Quincy Jones are people who sort of developed the idea of the ranch house. Also, just very quickly, this is a project in Malibu. This is the Franklin Wright Design Arch Oberler Estate from 1930. You probably know that the building, his main building wasn't built, there was instead, there was a sort of a conglomeration of little buildings that were done. The whole thing burnt down in the Woolsey fire. The Franklin Wright Foundation did not want this to be reconstructed and recommended us to design a new building which occupies the footprint. So with that, we'll talk about this project. The setbacks and easements, which everyone is familiar with. Here, I would like to talk a little bit about our approach. Is it possible to get closer to this or is it not going to record what I'm saying? Can I get closer to the?
The microphone's only going to pick you up over here.
Okay, good. So I think you're all familiar with the topography of this. So there are these two ravines. Oh, perfect. Thank you very, very much. There are these two ravines. We have this sort of promontory in the center and and what we identified is a topo line at 1291. This is more or less where the ground goes from the buildable to the unbuildable. So everything that is below that is not buildable. Our idea was to be as sensitive and careful with the site as possible. So we basically are using this 1291 topo line to develop the whole building with the exception of the front that extends outwards towards the view, which is this prow here. As was mentioned, at this point, we are five feet above ground. So this is exactly what we're allowed to do. And this gives us the kind of the overall shape of the building. What we were proposing was that rather than having a cut and fill situation, we are cutting at 1291 into the ground so that we create sort of a platform on which this house is developed. John already explained what the different buildings are. I'm not going to get into that. To give a little more information about the floor plan, how it's organized, so you enter here, this is the motor court. These are the public spaces, living room, dining room, kitchen. There is a wing to the west, which contains bedrooms, including a bedroom for Yuki Ogasawara's mother, who will be living here with a caretaker. And to the east, we have a library that then connects to the master bedroom suite. John already talked about this. This is the previously approved design, the section, and this is our section. So you see that we've managed to kind of drop this lower down. This was also mentioned and Dan Bolton will speak more about this. So this here is a film that... Was that? You'll have to do this. That just shows you what you see from as you move in a car on Crest Road, starting here in the west and as you kind of slowly move towards the east. And so this is the first canyon. This is the stable building with the corral. And you see in the background, you see the building down below, which at this point starts to disappear. This is the mound that was discussed and I know we'll talk about this more. This is the driveway entrance. And at this point, you'll start to see the house again down below and the ADU in the top left. So this is what you see from the street. David, I need you again for showing the... I just want to very quickly show a few newer renderings that we did to... Thank you. This is from the street and I will let David Gottscholz, who is the landscape designer and who's here, talk a little bit about the landscape. This is the view that you have from the street, the view that you have from the street from this point here. What you see here is actually our driveway. So the entrance would be somewhere here. At this point, this is where it sort of curves down and you get to the house. And this is the view from down below. Again, this is this five-foot, the point where we are five foot above ground. So we've invited a few people to speak here because we are completely aware of the fact that the water management on the site is a very big issue. For us, minimizing the grading and the cut and fill has to do with two reasons. One is, as I mentioned earlier, to place the building as sensitively as possible into the existing land without destroying that. But the other thing is that we want to disturb the existing drainage patterns as little as possible. We're completely aware of the drainage situation, water going down in this, mostly in this direction. We are aware of what happens down below. And again, we're not disturbing any land below the house. All of the grading is happening between the street and the building. And I would like to invite three people to speak. One is Kevin Poffenberger, who is a water engineer. We've worked with him on other projects. And he can talk very briefly about wastewater and some stormwater situations. We also have Dan Bolton, who I don't need to introduce. You all know him. He will also speak about this. And then lastly, we've invited our landscape designer to come along because we were asked to put together a fairly substantial landscape package. So is it okay if I pass it on to Kevin or do you have first questions or?
Okay, thank you. I just have one slide. Good evening. Thank you, planning commissioners. My name's Kevin Poffenberger, EPD Consultants, 202722 Main Street in Carson, wastewater engineer. And I have a couple roles on the project. Number one, the property is not served by a public sewer, so I'm delegated with the responsibility of managing wastewater. And for this site, we've chosen to pursue a subsurface drip irrigation dispersal system instead of the typical seepage pit dispersal system that's typically implemented in the area. And so before you, you see a slide. This slide has two different colors. The blue color is the proposed subsurface drip irrigation areas. And there's, you'll notice they're spread out across the site. They're in the native soils. And we've, in the process of facilitating approvals with the county, we're very fortunate. The county has, for the past five years or so, been approving these types of systems for new development. I've been doing these types of systems for over 25 years. And when I started, they had 20 years' experience. So it's nothing really new. It's taking wastewater and irrigating with it in the subsurface. So we've got that proposed for the wastewater. And the second task I have on this project is interfacing between the civil engineer and the landscape architect to facilitate stormwater capture and use because we've, stormwater is an issue at the site. And as Dan will get into, there's some very large cisterns on the west wing and east wing of the property collecting the stormwater. And we're working to help to manage that water, treat the water, clean the water, and integrate it with the landscape irrigation system to reuse all of the water on site, potentially, depending upon the frequency of the rainfall. But it does tend to balance out. It's a very large site and the, there are very large cisterns, so there's most certainly a potential to reuse all, if not most, of the stormwater. Otherwise, we also do propose to flush toilets with the stormwater, which is another use that is very fortunately in the state of California allowed as of the past five or seven years. So we've, we're really pursuing any opportunity at the site to reuse water. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I'm sure it's been communicated to you already, but one of the biggest concerns in the development of the site is hardscape creating additional sheet flow off of the property and the canyons. Cisterns were proposed in the last project. I don't know if Mr. Bolton's going to address that enough, but if you can speak to the capture, the offsetting of the additional hardscape and the capturing of that stormwater and then how it's going to be used, I think that will be very helpful.
Sure. So Dan will get more into the specifics of the drainage, but the drainage system collects all the stormwater. And so the difference between the existing site and the proposed site is that with development comes to active management of drainage. So the drainage will be collected and conveyed to the cisterns. There are two cisterns at the site. I think I can kind of point, here you go. There's two cisterns here and then there's one big cistern here. And we're just in the conceptual phases, whether there's two and two and one or one. It totals up to almost on the order of like 90,000 gallons of cisterns, which is very substantial. And
And that's all for stormwater?
Only for stormwater. Wastewater and stormwater are managed entirely separate.
The gray water stuff, while fascinating, less of a concern.
Sure.
It's the runoff.
Sure.
Be created by the development of the property.
Okay. Okay. So the, all the green areas are areas that will be irrigated with stormwater. And so that's on the order of 75% to 80% of the potential irrigation area is allocated for stormwater irrigating with the stormwater.
How about going backwards and asking, where are you getting the stormwater from? So all gutter systems to the house. How about the hardscape? There could be a justification for it not to percolate into the ground around the driveway. If it was hardscape, like cement or asphalt, does that drain and become part of your stormwater? What's the goal on the stormwater? To capture everything but versus letting it soak in the ground?
All of the hardscape is conveyed to the cisterns and the landscape as well. Some of the stormwater is lost to infiltration, but there is active drainage in the landscape as well. So there's less stormwater infiltrating now than after, but by the irrigation system will put it back for all practical purposes.
And there's not a calculation of what the wastewater versus the stormwater will, from a supply standpoint, there's no way to calculate that? Or is there, based on the house and the amount of toilets, et cetera?
Yeah, there's a lot of variables. And so it comes down to occupancy. The property is not budgeted to be occupied very heavily at the moment. You know, there's, for the size of the property, there's very few people that are planned to live in the house. So average flow, and I, we've, when we did the water balance, we have to factor in peak occupancy, not actual occupancy. So actually wastewater generation is probably less. Stormwater is hit and miss. And so I looked at stormwater generation. I've got this graph up here like from since 1888 downtown LA, they've been measuring total rainfall per year. And it's not that much that we get. I mean, I ran statistics on the numbers and put two standard deviations. So I can say like 90%, 95% of the time since 1888, we've only gotten 28 inches of rain, 28 and a half inches of rain per year. And usually it's in the teens. So we don't, we might get one good storm, but we don't get tons of good storms. And so all of that water is collected and then irrigated with.
Cool.
So I'm looking at it more from a practical standpoint of what we really see versus the civil engineering is done from the theoretical standpoint that Dan will get into. But all of the stormwater is, from the developed site, is conveyed to the cisterns. And then the cisterns are integrated with the irrigation system and the building toilets. That cuts down to the, can't reduce any further. Sure. Yeah, then we'll let Dan.
Okay. All right.
Thank you very much.
I'm Dan Bolton with Bolton Engineering. Civil engineer on behalf of the applicant. Actually, I thought Kevin did a great job in terms of explaining the thumbnail of what the stormwater is doing. But yes, we're collecting stormwater from the roofs, the hardscape, the landscaped areas that are tributary to the hardscape. So in this case, the landscape area that's in the middle of the site there will tend to drain onto the driveway and then be collected by the stormwater system that would be picking up the driveway. That water gets filtered so that it doesn't grow stuff. It gets conveyed to the cisterns and then gets used in a combination of uses for the irrigation and then flushing of toilets and other uses that can be domestic uses. The sizing of those cisterns, consistent with the discussions and deliberations that we've had on this property since 2016, we're sizing it for the increase in volume that results from the development of the site vis a vis the existing conditions for the 25-year storm. That sorts itself out to be roughly the same volume that you need to store for what LA County calls the first flush storm. So it's, which means that the 85th, that's the 85th percentile storm in Los Angeles County. And so 85% of all And so 85% of all storms that would hit this site, the developed portion of this site that would be tributary to those cisterns, none of the water ends up flowing off the site from the developed area, the area that's tributary to the cisterns because of the cisterns. So they've got the volume to capture that 85th percentile storm. In terms of percolation or infiltration, generally speaking, we try to avoid that in hillside areas. You know, there's a lot of discussion that we're all probably aware of in terms of the impacts that groundwater or water that's been conveyed to the substrate is having on landslide plains. Beyond that, most geotechnical engineers and soil and geologists that we work with that do reports for these properties say, in hillside areas, you want to try to avoid infiltration to the maximum extent feasible because it ends up tending to create unstable conditions. In this case, in addition to that, we would be hesitant to do percolating driveways in addition to some of the discussions that we had about decomposed granite or, or, you know, softscape driveways that don't meet fire access requirements. We've also have, we've got a five-foot retaining wall as well as a basement downhill of the driveway. So if the driveway is allowing a lot of water into it, well, that's water that's going to end up behind the wall of the driveway. In other times, cases, we have done projects where we've done driveways that allow infiltration, but instead of getting into the native soils on the site, we'll have, say, two feet of gravel underneath it and then a impermeable liner that prevents it from going any further. So you still get that kind of slowing down and, and treatment effect and getting the crud out of it, but it doesn't potentially have the impact on, on subsurface.
What's planned for this one?
On this one, the current plan is that we would have concrete by virtue of those cisterns. So we don't think that it's really necessary to have the additional infiltration because it's all going to the same place anyway. If it soaks into the driveway, it's just, you know, it's, it's one more point of failure on the, the system, you know, and ends up clogging up, and then it's acting just like concrete, so.
Great.
Any questions?
Hello, my name is David Gottschall, and I am the principal and owner of Terramoto Landscape. Our address is 3618 Pasadena Avenue, Los Angeles, California, 90031. And we are the landscape architecture office on this project. So I'd like to, I'll be very brief, but I'd like to at least give you some sort of sense about our office and how we're going about approaching the landscape architecture and landscape design on this project because we take our role in kind of steering and guiding the ecological functioning of this land with what we hope is great thoughtfulness and responsibility. So I'll be brief about who we are so that we can get into kind of more our approach on the project, but our office believes in designing landscapes that are appropriate to their region and place in the world. Oftentimes, our office kind of drifts somewhere between garden making and landscape design as well as restoration ecology. The image you see on the left is a project we did in Santa Inez, which kind of speaks to distilling the greater panorama. And the project on the right is a project we did for the Laguna Canyon Foundation, which is a privately owned but publicly accessible open space preserve in Laguna Beach that through education and kind of stewarding trail work and remaining open to the public is kind of, has done that community a great service. In working with our client and the architects and getting to know the site, we kind of always want to ground ourselves in both the region, like at a micro level, so thinking about where we are in the neighborhood and where we are in kind of the development of the picture behind you, but then also in thinking about how our site kind of stitches into the kind of regional open preserves. And so we kind of did, mapped out and did some thinking about how our site, which is the red dot in the middle, how it relates to the fact that there are a lot of preserves. And in the position in which we oftentimes find ourselves working on land that is in large part undeveloped, such as this one, are oftentimes what we try to do is play the role of protecting what is there. And in this case, it was music to our ears that both our client and the architects very much wanted to keep these ravines, which have kind of remarkably intact coastal sage chaparral ecosystems. There's a lot of like good toyon and roos integrafoli and a lot of like black sage and plants that are endemic to this region kind of prior to the greater development. There's a lot of good stuff going on in there. So as a start, we, our notion of protecting and leaving those intact kind of stands of habitation, both for ecological health of this site, but also in terms of stabilizing the soil, was a, a very positive to us. Our intention in designing this landscape is to design a mostly native garden that equates beauty with usefulness to wildlife, wildlife, creating trails and views and ways of framing and revealing the architecture. So this image that you see here was taken on site in, on May 9th in 2023, and this kind of goes to show there's artemisia californica and encelia californica, and there's a lot of good stuff going on. So we've been studying that, and in many ways, kind of the new landscape wants to kind of essentially do more of this. So to quickly kind of take you through the site plan, am I able to move the mouse? Yeah. So something of note, and in our wonderful walkthrough this morning, clearly there was our, our mound here was kind of already like rightly kind of being scrutinized as to like our intention, kind of what it did and the way it constructed views. As a start, we're of course leaving the existing eucalyptus that are up at the top here. We're actually showing one more than there really is. This one in the middle does not exist. So there's one here and then one here and then one a little bit away. In large part, this mound will be predominantly planted with Ariagonum parvifolium, which is the sea cliff buckwheat, which is a plant that supports the El Segundo blue butterfly. That's kind of like quietly one of our primary motivations is building a landscape that's going to be useful to this endangered species. In the middle of this, in the middle of our kind of low slung mound will be a meadow, probably of Carax pregasillus or like a native bentgrass, just something that our client could throw a picnic blanket down and kind of use. There's a, a water feature, but the primary intention of the water feature is to be useful to birds. It doesn't, we have construction details in the set that we've submitted. It doesn't stick out beyond 18 inches from the ground, so it's a very low slung sort of a thing. We are showing trees. We were, we were gently nudged that that might be a focus of attention in this meeting. For all intents and purposes, we're more than willing to kind of compromise and like talk about that. I do want to just call a detail to the fact that we aren't planting coastlive oaks in this mound. We did want to plant toyon and on both of these edges. We aren't planting any privacy hedges in this project, and actually, we don't want any like uniform monolithic hedging. If anything, we want to bolster already existing stands of vegetation through native species, but through kind of informal screening. So this neighbor here and this neighbor here that we kind of like softly preserve, like the polite kind of privacy that we have between these sites. These, the trees that you see in the mound are actually a Lyona thamnus floribundis. That is, it's the fern leaf catalina ironwood. These are slender trees that kind of max out at 20 to 25 feet tall, so they wouldn't be kind of arching oaks. But that being said, we are very open and willing to kind of talk about their presence or the lack thereof. And the other main gestures is we're mostly, other than doing a little bit of landscape to repair the very minor damage that would happen in building the building foundation, we really just want to plant endemic species to this lower side and a few like little trails so that our client and her family could kind of make use of the landscape and move throughout it. This is the general planting character. And this is kind of our species breakdown. So I'm happy to provide more details, but a lot of what you see here are stalwart coastal sage chaparral species. Many of them are indigenous to this area. Though we're not being puritanical about it, you'll notice that there is some lavender in here and some, this plant that you see here on the top right, this is a Cerusus canadensis forest pansy, which is, I should also call out, that's the trees that you're seeing here that are the lighter purple. These are also small trees. They're deciduous, non-native but regionally appropriate, and they max out at about 15 feet tall. But again, we're, we remain totally open to everyone's input. So that's kind of as a, an overview of the way we're approaching the landscape design.
Are you on site relative to the two eucalyptus trees? Are you guys governing to make sure that the root structure isn't damaged and whatnot? I don't know, what precautions you take just personally?
Absolutely.
With the big view corridor, and you know, we, we like those trees.
Yep.
Some of us.
I have mixed feelings, but I have
Everybody's a fan of eucalyptus, and I know.
I understand they're important to Rolling Hills. It's generally what we do is before construction in any capacity starts is we will build tree protection fences out to the canopy of the trees so that no construction traffic or construction materials are able to get probably within 15 feet of the base of those trees.
But the driveway, in terms of excavating for the driveway, depends on how deep you go, right?
It will.
If there's any kind of root barriers or anything like that, do you?
Sure. What we will probably do is seek the consultation of a licensed arborist. And then generally speaking, what happens is if we find a root with a diameter over six inches tall, that then we can do a little mini grade beam, or we'll figure out like the best way of mitigating any damage to the root of the tree.
Okay. We all had questions on the, the mound, I'm going to say.
Yeah.
The height of that. Can you review that? Because particularly for Sean, Commissioner Cardenas this morning wasn't there when I kind of asked some details on that, how high it will be.
Meg, going back to the grading, this section is probably, I think, the best. This morning on site, the word 15 feet tall kind of was said, and we want to kind of make sure that everyone understands that that's not the case. So essentially, the peak of the mound here is not any, is actually flush to crest where you see here. So really, the site now slowly kind of peters out this way. It really accelerates like the slope kind of when you get to this zone, but right now it goes slowly. But what will happen as we regrade the site is that this will be the same elevation as this. So very little of the view will in theory be getting cut off.
But it may be taller than the ridge line of the house elevation wise?
It will be. Yes.
And, and was part of that, you may not know this, maybe, Dan, to your question per view, is you're offsetting some of the offsite for the house, cubic yards to put in there as a storage facility?
Exactly.
Or store the, the land or move it to the middle?
Our, we have multiple objectives or motivations in creating that mound. The first one being that we wanted to take that cut and use it as fill on site. That's the more environmentally thoughtful kind of way of building. And as we got deeper into it, we actually thought that it was kind of a quiet, peaceful landform that kind of obscured the view of the house from the street, but also kind of offset our cut and fill.
And then there was, John, didn't you say there was something where they were asking for to have some offsite dirt?
I think one, it's my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, team, but that even though that our mound is absorbing a lot of our cut as fill, that despite all that, we still are ending up with fill, excuse me, with cuts slightly in excess of what is allowed. And so that is why you see earlier in the presentation, I don't know where it is, I think it was actually in your presentation.
This is, and to somebody said, this is for Commissioner Cardenas' benefit. This is a comment that I made this morning, but everything David's saying is absolutely correct. And of course, as most of us are aware, the code in the city of Rolling Hills mandates balancing of cut and fill on site. In this case, there was a healthy discussion amongst the members of the design team in terms of how best to address that more in the city of Rolling Hills. And from a civil engineering standpoint, there would be an opportunity to export more dirt. If we didn't do, it is conceivable to do no or almost no grading within the middle of that oval, in which case there would be more export. It's also possible to do no export and stay within code, do two-to-one slopes and have a taller mound. And that didn't seem particularly appetizing either by virtue of the fact that the, the peak of that mound gets taller and it also looks more manufactured. And so in the midst of that conversation about where's the optimum place to land, the proposal that's before you was kind of seen as a third way to say, okay, we're going to do some grading. We think there's some benefit to the site. We think there's some benefit to the larger real loop, but then also we don't think that keeping all of it on site is really an appropriate response either. So, and we bring that, I would say, at least for my own part, we bring that to cognizant that there could easily be other solutions to that problem. And, you know, we could easily be directed to keep more dirt on site, we could easily be directed to export more dirt. And so it's a, it's, we think it's a lot of question.
Yep, we're open.
Open to, to feedback.
My whole point about bringing it up was that, that, so it doesn't seem manufactured, but we're going to have to weigh whether or not we'd want to see more export to preserve a more natural look to that mound.
Sure.
And frankly, or continue the view. However, they make a great point, and I think one of the renderings was appropriate where you could see the ridge line of the house barely and then other parts that disappeared. I understand trying to hide the, hide the house and the structure with, with the landscaping is, is beautiful. That's, that's a great idea. Just it's the chemistry with that.
Sure.
Weighing it whether with the view, obviously. So we'll get there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's a thoughtful plan, and I think you've already heard this guidance, but as long as we're not putting view obstructing coastal live oaks
Sure.
Or something similar on top of the mound, my individual voice is, is fine with, with how that's been presented.
Thank you. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we have actually five speakers. You can get some more, so we're playing.
Yeah, if I may, thank you so much. Good evening. I'm U.P. of Las Loras, and I suppose I should say I'm 23 Crest East. But I also live in Los Angeles, as Frank mentioned in the beginning, in one of the homes that, that he renovated. And I just wanted to take this opportunity to say thank you so much for reviewing us. This is our first time up. So, you know, we don't really know exactly what to expect going forward, but I just wanted to say my piece, which is that I'm so excited to be here. I had been looking for a piece of land for a long time, and my father passed, and this is something I'm kind of feeling like it's, it's a legacy of my father. He loved properties, and he's done, building houses was his passion. And this is just something that is very close to my heart also, and I am very much looking forward to coming here and being part of the community. And as I think you can see, I have tried to build up a really fabulous team that's very sensitive and, you know, the wishes, I think we're all kind of on the same page as far as being very sensitive to the land and to the community and to the members in the community and, and being able to, you know, blend in and bring in positive contributions to the community. So that's what I'm hoping to do, and it's just very good to meet you, and I'll keep it short.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Appreciate your, your willingness to put this team together. Like, I'm somewhat familiar with the names and
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I'm very excited.
No, and I think it, you know, it's a premier lot in this city, and I think it's, there's pressure on us too.
Yeah.
And, and, and you obviously have neighbors down below with different type of pressure on us relative to.
Right.
And so, and they're our friends and neighbors and people we've known for years.
Yes.
So I, I think you, you've taken a sensitive approach, compliment the whole team just personally because I've looked at this, we all have several times.
Oh, good, okay.
And so I think this is a great first attempt, and no, it's not perfect in our minds, but I think it's, it's an awesome first attempt in my mind, so personally, so.
Yeah, this is actually, that's the other thing I was going to say, is that, you know, I am really trying to be sensitive to what the immediate neighborhood needs and wants and, and yeah, I want to keep sensitive to the view that's available and not take that away and share the land, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? I know we have some neighbors here. Anybody else want to talk? All right.
I'll get it over with. Charlie Rain, Forkit the Road.
So I appreciate the comments about the concerns for us.
So I appreciate the comments about the concerns for us on the water down below. And I'm not sure if you guys have seen the videos from 2017, if you remember the videos from 2017 that I took when the initial Heinz, let's call it a monstrosity to be generous with it, was proposed and eventually passed. Everything's changed, because I sent those videos to show how much water was coming down the canyon. Now, those videos show how much water didn't come down the canyon last year. It all came down and went into the slide plane, probably a hundred yards, 200 yards below 23 Crest. So that's, everything coming down Little Klondike, the 18 Crest Road drain comes down and disappears into the top of the landslide. So it's really, really kind of disastrous for us. I've sent it to the city council. I sent it to the community association board, too. So they're all aware of it. Christian was the best one at, I think, deciphering how to open the videos. There was a bit of an issue, but if you just wanna see the water that came down as a reminder, then you come down to our driveway and see that nothing flowed down at all last year. Nothing happened. Never came through. So that's our big concern. The whole team up at 23 Crest has been phenomenal, just like you guys were saying. I mean, very responsive, interested. They've put clearly a lot of thought into all this. I think the project is beautiful. Pretty much everything they've done, I really appreciate all the thought that went into it. My only concern is water. And the 18 Crest Road drain is already causing us massive damage down below, or it's gonna do way more, and we don't wanna make the news. But they can't add anything to it. There's no possibility for that to happen, because it's already causing damage. So I hope that, I don't know, Greg, a couple times today, I heard you mention that you're not, you're not a deciding factor in water, or...
Well, it's not under our purview to make the water, we're bringing it up as a subject, obviously. We're concerned, we wanna hear. I'm curious, obviously, how this, I think the wastewater, the stormwater, all of that is the future.
Yeah.
And particularly on this side of all sites in the city of Rolling Hills, just personally.
Yeah.
Okay? And how it relates to you. However, there is a disconnect between what's happening in your neighborhood and on both canyons that I know of, not being an engineer, and then the county and where their responsibility is, because they approve it. And your neighbor, Pat Wilson, obviously related to city council here, is, made several comments on there's a disconnect between once it goes from us and city council to the county, there's nobody, there's no comments being made. But we can't do anything about that. So it's like you guys getting involved. And so he's brought that up. And I said, well, what are you gonna do about Pat? And he says he's talking to all you guys. So we just wanna, I think it's under our purview to make sure it's brought up, it's response. You have free communication to their team, which I'm glad to hear your comments about them.
Yeah.
And then I think I feel better and sleep better at night that we've at least broached it. And, and the question is, are we experts to resolve it? And do we want that responsibility? No.
No. And I realize that you can't. All I'm saying is that, that as it goes forward, that there needs to be a push from the city, from the county, from the association to do something with the water. And, you know, if the, if a drain is brought to me, I'll pipe it through my property, and I know my neighbors below do the same thing and get it out of the city. I just wish that there was a, a process where the government entities, the city, the association, sort of did their job to pave the way for us to do a piping solution, then if they have overflow from the cisterns and I, and that they're safely distributed and transported out of the slide area and through the city, you know, it's a big problem. Then one question I would like to get an answer to at some point through all this is, I'm not sure how much impermeable surfaces are part of this. I would like to know the roofs, the patios, the driveways, how much we're talking about generating, and the size of the cisterns. Because Dan, I thought, said 70,000 gallons.
Or 90. 90,000?
No, no.
So it's 37,000 square feet of total coverage, and we've currently got 55, I think we've got 5,500. So the previous proposal, the Darkmoon Ranch proposal, had 38,000 of change square feet. So we got a little less, we got the same design as Darkmoon, so that's 55,000.
Turn around on this. I think it's a good question. I think we can resolve and at least answer the question through the team.
Yeah, yeah.
And let's get a more detailed answer.
I'd just like to see it in print. Here's what it is.
Something, John, can I ask you to follow up on that, just to make, to coordinate getting an answer to that? Okay.
Very good. Thank you. Appreciate all your...
Total hardscape, non-permeable surface, and total volume of cisterns.
But I think we definitely should bring in your consultant relative to, and Dan's comments on, and that makes total sense. The opposite of what I thought today, to be honest with you, is you want it permeable to go into the ground, and you're saying no. And I agree with you based on the thought process, that the more you can get it into the cisterns, the less will run off. And you're keeping it on site, so to speak. So I think that's the goal of their team, is to keep it on site as much as possible. Okay.
John Lockenbach, 56, Fort Cheyenne Road. And I live directly below this project, and I think it's a beautiful project. It's gonna be an asset to the community. First-class team, and looking forward to being neighbors with you. I have one comment, is on the cisterns that are gonna be placed here and here. And the vegetation's all up here. It seems to me like maybe the team might wanna consider looking at placing the cisterns in another position to be closer to the vegetation. And the reason is, I'm wondering how these cisterns are gonna be pinned to the foundation, or they're free-floating, or they're a pre-cast cistern, and just how they're gonna be held in place. Because there's definitely gonna, you know, there's probably gonna be sometime where there's gonna be overflow. And I'm just wondering how that's gonna affect my property if these things start overflowing. That's all I gotta say.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Leah Mersch for centering. I wanna echo everything everybody said. I think this project is gonna be so beautiful. We're so fortunate that this team has come in and new owner. This is, to me, such an improvement over any of the three previous things we've seen at this location. I do wanna echo the concerns about addressing the issue of the water management, and I'm glad to see that everybody's working on that, but that is a very serious concern. And I don't wanna be a buzzkill, but I just wanted to mention while you were talking about the landscaping plan and the eucalyptus trees and how we love eucalyptus trees. I do believe the city has a rule that says you cannot plant new eucalyptus trees in the city, so I just wanted to get that.
Understood.
Out there. And also, that's from, that was adopted because of the fire concerns, because of the oil that's in eucalyptus trees. But it also, and as beautiful as all of this looks, you really can't control how high the eucalyptus trees go, grow, because they don't crown reduce very well. And...
But I didn't hear that. They're not gonna plant any more eucalyptus. Yeah, they're not planting any eucalyptus. Yeah.
Obviously, keeping what you have is great. I'm sorry, I misunderstood. I, never mind. Thank you very much.
It's called the firmly Catalina Ironwood, and the Ironwood sounds like a eucalyptus.
All right.
It's a good point.
Okay. Up to us now. And I would like, I don't know if you guys like, but your list, John, in the, there were seven or eight things. Could you bring that back up?
On the screen? Do you want me to bring it back on the screen?
Yes, please.
Do you need to sit here?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Did you wanna come?
Back up and say anything?
Well, I wanted to maybe answer questions.
That'd be great, because I think those seven things is what I would like to ask, or I think we'd like to address just a couple of those. Yeah.
And I don't think we need to have those addressed through this meeting, but I'd like to give them specific items to work on and...
Yeah, there it is. Okay, so, in my mind, these are the things that I'd like to address. We've addressed a few of these things. Would you guys just like to give them this list, or do you wanna discuss this now, or any of them?
We did talk about the mound and trees. And in my opinion on the mound and the trees is, mound, as it's been presented, I don't have any issue with it. I'd like to see bounds cut and fill on site, and as long as the trees aren't gonna be massive view blockers, I'm okay with those two.
And maybe why we've got their attention, maybe the mound could be actually flagged. Is put the flags right at the height of the mound, so we can kinda get their idea relative to the ridge line.
Yeah, that was, I think, your suggestion earlier today, which I think is my best.
I don't know. What you, Sean, when we went over to the guest house, it was, and with the architect giving a comment, yeah, that was a little close to the canyon, so I'd like you to address that.
Right now?
No, it's kind of like, I think we're just, I think you already are going to, so I think we could, we could get there. But it's, that and the, and the barn is, that's an issue for me, because when you change the use and it's in the front yard setback, we are all about equestrian. But when you change the use, then all of a sudden, it doesn't justify it in my mind. So I just...
I'm happy to see a barn in the front, and actually, Owen Crest is a couple that are already. Personally, not okay with mixed use, and I don't love the idea of the ADU being prominent in the front yard as well. So I'd love to see if there's ways of obscuring or removing those from the front yard. If it's gonna be a barn, great. But if it's a mixed use in the front yard, that's gonna be a hard sell.
It was hard to tell on the plan whether that was going to be a functional barn with the stalls into the corral and that whole area, and then the retaining wall comment. I wasn't quite sure how that was all going to be designed.
So the barn is gonna be used for either two horses or one horse and one goat, because the horse should not be on its own. And then everything that is needed around that, there's gonna be probably fairly large sort of, you know, Jean Deere-type things to do work that's gonna be parked in there. Probably a horse trailer is gonna be parked in there. So there is also a space for somebody, a groundskeeper, to have a small office that's also in there. I think that's what makes it a mixed use.
And it's not the intent in that somebody lives there.
It's not, no. And, 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 but I can be very frank about this. One of the advantages of flagging this is that we also see that we actually want to sort of reduce the size of this a little bit. We also, the guest house, we realize that there is a sort of inaccuracy in the survey. And so we will definitely sort of pull this back a little bit and adjust this to have a more considerate relationship to the ravine. It's also for us, it's too close to the ravine.
Sean, one other thing that we've noticed is that the barn is against the setback, but then the overhang is roughly eight feet. And for a six-acre property and being close to the neighbors next door, personally, I would like, I think you have enough room, and it's not like right on the driveway, and if you're gonna reduce it, you may wanna reduce it from the property line back closer. Just my suggestion, I don't think it's the end-all, but I was just looking at that and that five-feet-at-least wall, which is a foundation wall, is facing the neighbor, and I think that could be, it's not necessary in my mind, if that makes sense.
So one thing, and this is also something that we sort of realized once we flagged it, that we want to turn the barn a little bit to be more parallel to the topo lines, to avoid the southwest corner being, being so high. So that it is a little bit nestled more, you know, follows more the topography. And, and, so, you know, those are things that we also saw and that we realized we want to address.
And I just wanna make sure the neighbors, if you guys heard what he said, he's gonna reorientate it a little bit. So let's just wait until he...
I think that's cool suggestion.
Okay. So let's just wait to see how that happens at the next. So, anything else? Oh, I think the, they made a good point about the decking. So the decking can't look cantilevered, and then whatever the slope is beyond, I know you don't want any railing, so whatever the legal slope is, two-to-one from there off, so you don't have to have that, which I think would look really clean. I get your look. Don't disagree. It looks cool. It's just not norm for here.
Right.
Yes, there are some things there that I know we need to address.
I'm okay with the basement extruding into the, underneath the deck. I'm okay with that, but...
North-south instead of east-west.
Yeah. I don't think that was a big deal, right? Okay. Anything else there? I think we kind of addressed everything, but we gotta rego back, but yeah.
Can I just make one comment about the driveway and the concern about the roots? So we are, we're not doing any regrading in this area up here where we're going between the existing trees. And so the idea there is really to, we will do the center part that we have to do as a, you know, solid surface, but as much as possible in DG. I know that there's an issue about permeable surfaces, but because we are putting a driveway between the two trees. But I think as you saw today and as was discussed with the traffic commission, we are well away from, from the trees, but we're, of course, mindful of the roots that are...
The mild slope, too, at that point into the middle of the property, so.
Right. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Not everybody loves eucalyptus.
The view.
I have three. I have three beautiful ones.
I have big ones, too.
Too many beautiful eucalyptus.
All right. Any other public? I think, oh, it's up to us. So are we good? So are we gonna make a motion to...
Yeah, I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing until the next meeting.
Okay.
And request that the applicant make, continue to make thoughtful adjustments to the proposal as guided by staff.
Okay. All right. Roll call, please.
Okay. Commissioner Cooley?
Approved.
Approved.
Unless you're...
Yes. Thank you. Great job on the presentation, so. Yeah, thank you. Do we have any old business? Hey, guys. We gotta, we gotta continue our meeting here, so any talking, please do outside. Thanks.
Any new business?
Schedule field trips.
Well, we have two items that we just continued right here. The 23 Crest Road East will have to be re-noticed. We could go back out there if they restake it to do another field trip, if you like.
I think we do.
To the benefit of Gabby and Brad.
And we have to change the staking on the guest house and the middle one. And the barn, it sounds like, probably. So those will be netted.
End up with the mound, yeah.
The mound.
Yeah. And then on centering, I would suggest, whatever they come back with, but to, it wasn't very visible today on where that...
The tady walls?
Yeah, yeah. I just was, the retaining walls on both sides of the property. In general, they did a good job, but they didn't, I didn't feel like, I thought that could be done better. And you have any other ones than those two?
Not right now.
That you know of? Okay. And of all things, I'm out of town next month, so. Okay, and of all things, I'm out of town next month, so, you guys have fun. All right, items from staff?
Um, just to thank John here for, for being available for the meeting, um, I guess Scott got caught up, uh, you know, out east, he wasn't able to make meetings, so.
Okay, little weather and flights or something, right?
Critical to tonight's meeting, so I'm happy to be here.
Yes. Anybody from planning, anything from planning?
Nope.
Nope.
All right. We adjourn.